We're good.
All right, here we go. I'm going to call the meeting to order, the Board of Trustees of the Spokane Public Library, meeting for May Tuesday, May 16, 2023. And we are starting now at 3:00. There's a sign up sheet, and you can sign up for public comments. And online, there's an email. Just these at SpokaneLibrary.com. I'll read the landing knowledge, and then we'll get started. All of Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands of Spokane tribal Indians, upper band, middle band, lower band, and children. Since time immemorial, Spokane tribal Indians have lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as slush of ears. Their parents texted their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. And we leave, maybe learn from one or another stories so that we may nurture the relationship with people who spoke in our tribe and to all those who share this land. Do we have any changes to the agenda, or can we consider it adopted? We will proceed. So I will entertain a motion for approval of the April 2023 minutes. Second, all right, we can second it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And now for approval of the April 2023 contributions. I move that we approve the April 2023 goes and contributions in amount of $1,305,419.41. Right, it's the executive, all in favor?
Aye.
And now we're ready for the financial report.
All right, so for the library operations, start April 2023. In our passionate investment spread, so by the end of April, the library has enough cash to invest in balance available to cover 131 days of operating costs. That balance is $5,726,500. That is net of our accommodations for $257,804, and does improve our reserve for capital of $1,231,000. Our expenditure trends, all operations, sorry, April operations, sold $1,021,142. Of that amount, 67% was in cost per personnel. We did have our utility truck purchase come through for the facilities. Truck, that total amount was $6,242. That is after a $3,500 trade in credit for the old truck. We did cancelize a portion of that truck, so we took the large box piece off of it and had it placed onto the main truck, which we saw costing extra. Our books and materials purchases were $81,262. Our branch security guard charges told $48,048. Our trouble utilities, which approved branches on a storage site, were $28,318. And then our nature fund charges for the third quarter totaled $28,200.
All right, our own three levels.
And for our, this is August. So this is, April marks a release commitment file for us, start the operations expenditures are. This is the first, the first month that we're fully operational at all of our branches since before the fall. As a comparison, I did, so back in 2019, in the spring, kind of our average monthly expenses were $783,000, and exclusive of the truck, the operational costs for April about $960,000. Pretty sweet, it's pretty exciting. Additionally, we are in the process of implementing an electronic request system for staff members. This is, this is something that they can submit on our internet site. There's some of our other departments have that with support services for IT or facilities. So we're going to be joining that so we can better track what some of our requests are. And we can use some already known channels. Some of the, some of, some examples, main topics that we'll have on there will be arts questions, including inventory and asset type question, customer account increase, mileage and travel, payroll question, grants or contracts. So I'd like now to open up for any questions for our customer depending.
Thanks, Amy. All right, any?
No, thank you. Well, I'll start off tonight with nothing to report in the way of obligations under the special signing authority. I thought it was a good time to highlight the project closing progress. So if we just take a look at the expenditure trend through April, you'll see that it was $284,000 in April. Our average in the preceding 12 months is about 1.2 million. January always drops way low because of the period 13 year end closing. But you're, we're starting to see now that the projects are winding down and we're getting to the point where we're paying out retainage and, and wrapping up the jobs. I typically don't show a trend on encumbrances, but I thought, I thought this was a good look here, too. Currently, April closed with $777,000 in encumbrances, which are obligations in the form of contract and purchase orders. Compared to just in January, it was 3.3 million. So a lot of, lot of closing activities taking place. So now if we look over at our public works projects numbers, I showed you that, that top half, I showed that in December, and at that time, we had 46 total projects. And 15 of those were closed. But since December, we've added three additional projects for a total of 49. 21 of those are currently open and active. We've got four projects pending state agency approvals. Our slowdown that we're, we're finding here is with the Department of Revenue, they're experiencing some severe staff staffing issues. So for example, jobs that we submitted for closure in January are just now getting Department of Revenue releases. And a reminder that we can't fully close a job till we get a release letter from Labor and Industries, Department of Revenue, and Employment Security Department. But the big news here is that since December, we've fully closed nine projects. And as slow as they operate, and that's, that's a big deal. And I'm seeing that trend continue in, in May, we're starting to get some closures initiated, may not be fully closed yet. And lastly, I spoke about the hive, the swell, a few months ago. I mentioned that during the construction of the hive, the city had a water main break on the east side of the parking lot on Haven Road. It did breach our, our construction project. After, after that winter and this, and our landscaping was completed, the swell, which is a catch basin near the parking lot, was not draining properly. They shouldn't look like a swimming pool or a pond, and this one was doing that. So there was concern that silt had, had gotten into that swell and it, and had compacted it. So we had, that was, we had core samples done, and it, it was determined that the silt was not the cause. And so the designers and engineers evaluated that swell and the design of it and decided it needed a two-stage irrigation system, only a single stage was input. That work was completed for $2,600, which we were thrilled about. And as of today, I'm, I'm learning that it is holding. So we're, we're hopeful that that was a, a very inexpensive solution. And that concludes my update tonight. Just a reminder that Hill International won't report any longer, so Lorraine won't follow me this time, but I invite any questions that you might have.
I do have a question, Penny. You said there were three projects that were added since last month?
And since December, but we, we add, everything we do is public works. For example, when we did the, when we issued purchase orders for the installation of the kiosk at Catholic Charities and at Yolks, that creates a public works job. And another recent example is we had blinds installed, that it was found that, that there was a need for more blinds at Liberty Park in Shadle. And those, again, any time that you affix to the building or the structure, that creates a public works job. So we'll continue, continue to see public works jobs come on and off as we, as we conclude.
Thank you. Any questions for Penny? Right, thank you, Penny.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the chairman's report, and there is no chairman's report, so we'll move on to the library executive director report.
All right, thank you. The past month or so, we've seen a lot of travel, engagement, learning through the organization. We sent both Paul Chait and Carissa now into a national conference title that focused specifically on security and safety issues in libraries, which I do feel speaks volumes to the state of our communities in general for a need for a national conference solely on that subject. But lots of lessons learned that we'll be implementing in future months and weeks as we take in that information and adopt as best we can. Neither Paul or Carissa, they likely give more information on things that they're moving at. But some helpful things like the role of, specifically the role of staff, security, and social service workers, and really defining those roles is something that we'll be implementing in the future. As well as some focus on adolescent brain development, where it used to be, the window would be like 10 to 24 for adolescent brain development. They've now extended that to 30 years old. What that means is you're not always thinking of consequences. So we're seeing that window open a little bit, because we have less than 30 on our staff. But I hope you think about consequences as you're doing your actions. I also attended the Urban Library Council CEO Roundtable in New York City. That was last week. Lots of same things there as well, safety, security, budgets, staffing, all the fun stuff that we get to worry about at the CEO level. But it was my first time in quite a few years since basically the pandemic interacting at that level. So it was really good to not only see the city, but engage with peers as well. Today, actually, this very day, Carissa, Amanda, and Mason Neal presented at the Next Library Festival in Arnes, Bed Market. All reports on time delay say that the program was a great success. It focused on our play spaces, like using your localness to really give a window into the world, basically. So those were really, that was a popular program. And actually, when I was at the CEO Roundtable, there were a couple directors that came up to me, and they're using the same company that we use, and see created, because they were inspired by what we created here at Spokane. So that's pretty cool to serve as that inspiration. We also hosted our first naturalization ceremony at the Central Library, which was really awesome. 41 individuals from 18 different countries officially became citizens on stage at hall. One of the folks that obtained their citizenship was actually a member of the Spokane Symphony, and they played up on the stage as well, which was really cool to see. I also met with Melissa Huggins, they are the Spokane Arts Director, to discuss some potential funding options that we'll likely be looking at this month. The governor recently signed into law a change in how governments can access what they call cultural access funds. These are funds to support after-school programs around arts and culture, as well as just reduce barriers for the general public around those types of programs. We fit in well in that category. Basically, what the change in law was, is that in prior years, this, this is funding that was established in 2017, municipalities, governments would need to go out for a vote for the people in order to enact a one-tenth of one percent sales tax to fund this type of access. Now council, city councils, counties can just do it councilmatically, which means it's just a vote by city council. So what that means for Spokane is probably six to seven billion dollars per year. That would really expand programming out of the community. So we can do some temperature checks with council, speak with Spokane Arts, as well as Spokane Public Schools, because they would be a huge benefactor of this funding as well. But we could talk about that more later in detail. As far as our collections go, we now have access to newspapers.com, West Collection. So that gives us more digital access to local newspapers. That's been a focus as part of our, this room is to increase the digital footprint and access of those resources. So moving along that. For our DEI discussion upcoming this month, we're going to talk about the book, What We Don't Talk About, When We Talk About Fact by Aubrey Gordon, to kind of challenge our perspectives around the very American concept of weight and body tech. So looking forward to that. And regrettably, we're going to announce that Alan Wagner will be retiring soon this month. We are currently under recruitment for his position. Also, I'm looking forward to building on the work that he's, he's really established here, he's been essential in building up Spokane Public Library over the past eight years. So thank you for that. We are going to miss you, but we are recruiting first, we'll place that. Our star spotlight for April, Francesa Bistro, the energy team player. Sophie recently took over her youth outreach services, which delivers materials to daycare facilities throughout the city. But she's also really just stepped up and filled in wherever and whenever she can at our other facilities as we're still transitioning, you know, having all facilities open. So thank you to Sophie, I really appreciate stepping up. I also mentioned here that on May 9th, they had that first convening for downtown safety collaborations, and it's meeting called Security Teams Downtown. I don't have any information on it, because Paul and I have been sort of asking each other to travel, but be sure to get that update when he gets back. I'm just glad to see that it's on the calendar and that they actually met. We have seen over the past couple months, a decrease in the security issues at Central. So happy to see that decrease, I don't mean activity, but decrease that amount of stress pushback as well. We find that it's often weather related, sort of the activity that we see, we're going to continue to keep an eye on, and work towards getting better and better at that. And then it's budget season. We're in the city of Spokane, so it should be interesting couple of months, especially in election year. See when that is. Last of the town halls that they held, City of Spokane, they held a lot of libraries. Last of those, it was last week, they're doing a virtual meeting tonight. There's a survey, anyone wants to fill it out?
Check this here.
So I'm not saying you can check the libraries. Yes, you get to, you get to choose, you get $10, and you can, you can choose which department you want. Very simple. Any questions for me?
I want to say thank you, Dad. Thank you very much.
This person's very true.
We may not have a chance to do. Do you have a date? Is there a date in mind?
Just make a transition with me.
Because you want us to, yeah. Appreciate that, thank you for that, yes.
He's doing the responsibility.
I was curious, was there a discussion of your citizenship issues at your CEO summit?
There were. A, a lot of, the discussion was around how more urban libraries can support the rural libraries that are receiving, you know, reconsiderations. Seattle Public Library just signed on to an open collection that, it's a digital collection that it's all their books, challenged books. They get a lot of traffic from rural communities throughout the state. Your public library has similar, so it's a partnership. But you see that difference in the rural versus the city.
Okay, excellent, I have a question. I have a question about the safety and in the anticipation of whether it gets hotter. And if there, if the decrease is due to like the mitigation strategies that have been put in place, or like lack of traffic, or if you know?
I think it's both.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think that, you know, you just see what's cold. I do, I just say we'll see more when it's hot, although in the past, there were many, as you do when it's cold. The city did approach me today about whether or not we would again serve as a cooling. Rest that, consider it. However, they actually have to have a plan in place.
Yeah.
For us to do it, because it was a mess last year. And I don't just need a plan.
Yeah.
I need a limitation. Solid, so work and time is not followed on library staff to support.
Did they have, did they do any outreach to in their efforts that they're, they have the, the walks that they're doing in different neighborhoods to try and understand what those Ecaps look like and where people can go? Was there any kind of?
They presented a cabinet a couple of weeks ago, Gonzaga's meeting that happened. So they at least have the information.
Yeah.
Nice to know. Okay, well, I'm looking forward to hearing if there's more fruitful conversation at the safety collaboration as well.
Yeah, yeah, I'm interested to see how that first meeting. It was helpful last night. Talking about it, hopefully help with the expectations of sensible behaviors in downtown.
All right, thank you, Andrew. And next on our list is the Council Liaison Report. Is that online with us?
Zach had a meeting conflict. So senses regrets, he's very interested in our, really likes that we did that. Sometime next week.
All right, so now we have the meetings report.
Since Amanda is out of the country, my name's Alina, I'll be presenting for the marketing team. So some highlights this month, Mark Pond, our business librarian, and I continue to work out, to send out monthly emails to the local business community. It's called Business Time with Mark Pond. That's a plan where it's from a YouTube video series that he did with our video education specialist, Ryan, during the pandemic. And this last email that we sent out got about a 30% read rate, which is read rate, which is great. Industry average is about 21%. And then in April, we also hosted one of the largest events that we have had at Central Library, the, which was the Spark Central fundraiser, followed by the American Advertising Awards fundraiser. So both of those are special events, which were a huge undertaking for a lot of library staff, but particularly Samantha Murphy, she's gone above and beyond with all special events planning. And we have really established ourselves and our name in this town as an event space. And she's really, she's really the person that has helped us get there. So huge kudos to Sam. We are also working, well, Skylar is working with Language Line to create additional translations in Dari, Farsi, and Pashto, Pashto, is that how you say? And sending new materials in for the translations about meeting rooms and other resources. And then a couple of other highlights that you'll see in the social media. But the Friends of the Library book sale was a fantastic success. They raised about $3,700 for the Friends of the Spokane Public Library. So really fantastic job. That was also some, some of those posts were also some of the highlights on our social media. And that same day, well, the middle day of the book sale, we also had a spring garden plant swap, and we had about 300 people come in for that as well. So we just had an enormous amount of people at Shadle Park Library on April 29th. So fantastic job to our community outreach, Jinjin Moses. And then another shout out to, to Skylar, because Library Giving Day was in April, and that, we raised about, close to $5,000 for. Foundation, yes, thank you. So huge kudos to Skylar and the foundation. I know you do a lot for the foundation and for the Library Giving Day. And then, yeah, you'll see a couple of highlights, nothing really noteworthy in terms of social media engagement. It fluctuates month to month, but a few highlights were what I had talked about already. And then via email, other than just our welcome emails, our recommended emails, the next most popular email was the Library Giving Day email. So fantastic. And then we just had a one earned media in April, but it was a really good one, and it covered all of, kind of wrapped up all of the bond movement and measure with Emery, who works at, the spokesman came over and did a really nice article about that. So if you haven't taken a look, it's on our website as well from News coverage. So that's it. Yeah.
Just in the meeting with the Friends of the Library, they were so grateful for all of the outreach from the marketing team, so thank you for that.
That's all Skylar. Thank you.
And they attribute a lot of their success and people coming into that, both the location being at Shadle and having so much of the traffic and really letting people know that it's happening.
I'm so glad, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the program report with Jason.
You'll see a lot of numbers in your report about, so the value score is still a massive work in progress, trying to calibrate what the base level of our program should be. A lot of what I'm doing right now is going through each program with the youth staff, particularly because their scores are showing up lower than they should. And I'm walking through, making sure that they fully understand the questions and whether or not I need to put questions on them. Or hire, really want to find that base level, like number that you don't do anything that doesn't hit this score and everything above it is good. So, but on other notes, we had 295 events in the month of April, that includes all of our programs and our one-on-one sessions with specialists. Over 5,000 people came to things. It's weird, when you look at, I put a couple charts up here for attendance, you add the adult and the specialty together, it's 51% of our attendance, and 49 for youth, so it's right down the middle, pretty much, of youth programming and adult programming attendance, which is interesting. Kind of broke it down as well by branch, just to kind of see what that looks like. And of course, Central is still the highest, has the biggest spaces to be programmed in. We have a bigger stuff there, but 29%, but Shadle is right there, at 27% of the attendance at that branch. But otherwise, it's a really good distribution. How do you expect it to be? How do you expect it to be with the size of the branch? I think that we'll see South Hill potentially overtake Liberty Park as we move forward. But right now, they're kind of neck and neck. Some highlights from the adult team. Jinjin hosted a nature walk with naturalists and author Jack Lisbon along the Denver Trail out there at Liberty Park. And there were 45 people that attended, walked along, talked. So then that got everybody thinking they want to take walks on their programs. So Sharma had a walk and talk at Riverfront Park that everyone really liked. People did comment about how they hadn't felt safe to walk through the park on their own, but in this group format, with Sharma talking about finding inspiration in nature for writing, they really enjoyed it. We also had Dana Bronson, our local historian, back. This is her first full month back from maternity leave, so she had 32 one-on-one appointments this month back. So that's really good to have her there. Talked about the plant swap already where Jinjin gave away trees and seeds. I think there were trees all.
Yeah, she had like 500 trees.
500 trees.
That she had to get rid of or give away graciously.
So the trees were all throughout the inside of Shadle Park during the book sale. It's a crazy time. Tons of kids events are really cool. I can't ever pronounce this one, I'm going to say it. Art, Art Kid Texture with Rema Lisa, partnered with some local architects, put a program together. You can check it out there. Mason, Magic Beans, all of our cozy hangout with Gina for high schoolers and middle schoolers. Kathy Arsham, I remember, ended up making a roller coaster with the pigeon program. Programs are going strong. Couple of other highlights, we had KIRS at their fun drive, first fun drive while living in the building and went off pretty well. They also held a live event on the stage that was broadcast live on the radio. So all of our technology was working really well there. We had many comments when KIRS was broadcasting something from our stage or from the studio about how listeners would call in and say, this is the best that it's ever sounded for a live event.
Oh, that's great.
We also hosted a concert, which was also broadcast live with Lydia Brown. She wrote a bunch of songs based on, inspired by Spokane and Spokane businesses and recorded each song at a different recording studio around town. One of which was with and there were close to 300 people that showed up to that event. Any questions?
Was that also broadcast on the radio?
Yeah, that was actually the first one we did. I went outside, it wasn't doing on my phone streaming, so it's not really good.
So one of the things that came out of that CEO roundtable too is we talked about how we can do a lot more programming than a lot of other library systems. We did. Other library systems. And we also staff differently. So a lot of, I would say probably 95% of library systems, they staff. So their programmers are also their reference. So they have like this dual world, you know, appeal our programmers out. We just weren't seeing those sort of reference transactions other than with Mark Pond. And at least that deep level research. We do do it a bit different.
So I'm curious as to what we're supposed to pull from the data report. Are we just like kind of just getting to know it and you're going to figure out some way to distill it?
Yeah, really. Really, I don't know, I shouldn't have included it. I included it last month, so I couldn't make it in this month. We're just really doing data collection right now and trying to figure out.
Learning what it says.
Yeah, learning what it says. And there's going to be some scores that'll change for certain programs, but that's not because the program necessarily did anything different. It's because, oh, we were missing this piece that we should be evaluating or would score this differently. Really, I think the tool, in the long term, will end up being more of a one-on-one. We'll have a minimum score, you have to hit to do it. But then the scores will really be something for the supervisor and that staff member to kind of evaluate their performance and work on some versus comparing one person's scores to another. Because, for instance, Andy, who's our music educator, audio engineer, he has a program where he spends 40 hours one week recording a session with somebody. And he'll rack up the points for that in this system, but no one else has the opportunity to spend 40 hours in a week. It's, there's kind of apples to oranges there. But we're still, it's, yeah, the numbers are rest.
A reference for thoughtful programming.
Yeah.
You could see a good sense of the types of programs all in one snapshot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, ignore the numbers on there, you just see everything you did. That's kind of why.
Excellent. Any other questions for Jason? All right, excellent. Thank you, Jason. All right, now we're onto the business and that is Alan with our employment engagement.
Okay. All right. It's minutes and some updates, you know, there's mistakes. But you have the one on mine.
Yes, thank you.
A little quick background on this survey. Most of the core questions are based on a galaxy search that reflects engagement. Here, we like engagement because it shows really wellbeing for our staff, satisfaction for our staff. It leads to our ability to retain staff, which leads to more ability to perform really consistent customer service. It barriers for us to achieve the mission. So you could follow the whole string as to why engagement is really important to us. We've done this survey now a lot of great years. We consistently show progress, gradual progress each and every year. You can almost track the development of our current culture. We have gone to time and span here over the course of the survey. And that was all true until 2020. Or actually 2022. So 2020 was our greatest way ever. And we reached the pinnacle of almost years, six years. That seventh year in 2022, well, a few things happened. We went through several changes, as Nicole just mentioned. We just became operational in all our branches again. Well, who would have known that we took on, you know, major construction projects in every one of our branches during the pandemic? It hurt our engagement a little bit. And so 2022 set us back several years about back to 2018 levels of engagement. All that to say, the story of 2023 is our ability to have this rubber band-like rebound and performance back to scores of, in many cases, the best we've ever had in the survey. At least widely where we had achieved back in 2020. A lot of that is remarkable due to the fact that nearly half of our frontline staff, nearly half of our customer engaging staff is branded in the library over the last time we did a survey. So virtually in the last 12, 18 months, we've added that many staff. So I attributed a lot to the ability of our leaders and our supervisors to engage with their staff, assimilate them into our culture, onboard them, orient them into where we're at and get them in a position to where they feel like they're going to contribute. Okay, the proof will be in 2024 when we do the survey again and did all these new staff. Was it just a shiny thing or is it only here? And you know what? There'll be someone else here.
I don't think your ears are more than me.
A couple of things I just want to highlight for you. So the survey is 34 questions. It gives you the ability to answer a question, either you strongly agree, agree, strongly disagree, or disagree. There's just no middle ground. And so we try to people to make decisions one way or the other. And what we really track is trying to get people into strongly agree and agree. And I want to highlight the areas where we get 96% of our staff saying that they strongly agree or agree to these statements. And then some of the top scores and areas which I would highlight during the past year have had opportunities to learn and grow. And we went from 88% to 96%. It was one of our greatest increases in that time. And to get staff back in buildings and back with our leadership and back dealing with customers and feel like they've also had opportunities to learn and grow and they thought that that was productive instead of just hurry up, get back in here, we got to do stuff. I, I think that's a great tribute again to everyone in the branch. And then our top improvements, this is just a reflection of, yeah, 2022, that was, that was a tough survey. But the ones that have consistently given us trouble have been information I need to do the best I possible, materials and equipment. We've always struggled with, are we getting them what they need? And do they feel like they're receiving all the communication that they need? We always have worked on this. We've achieved some of the best scores we've ever had in this group and it produced some of our greatest improvement. So I, I think that's fabulous again in this process of just bringing all our branches operational again and we're able to communicate and make sure that people have. Happy with all the rest of those. Had opportunities to learn and grow. My job allows me to do the things that do best. I recommend the library to my friends and they're very satisfied with their job. I left off, I mean, Steve, when I said we did a full survey, they're also very strong scores and the people know how they contribute to the mission, which was really key for us. And then finally, potential areas for some focus improvement. Mostly I wanted to highlight, I feel safe and secure when I'm at work and the answer is no. And it was one of the not evil states that we had. But obviously, we've had some difficulties with need to reopen, especially at Central. We poured a lot of resources and efforts into this and you've heard about all those things, but it's certainly one of the areas that came out of the survey. And next steps for us, all the information, the full survey, which is weighted and you'll see and I'll describe it to you, all sent to the survey. As people respond, they're given opportunities, as I've mentioned, for those four answers. And then we wait each of those answers and that comes up with a score overall. That's why I'm able to say, you know, in 10 of the 34 questions, so nearly a third of all of our answers, we scored the best we ever had. Moments from going from 2022, virtually back to 2018, all the way up to scoring the best we ever had in this kind of somewhat chaotic environment. Stunning. So next steps is all the information that's shared with staff, shared with leadership. Each of the groups get together to discuss the results of the survey. They're asked to take a look at the results and find areas where they think that they have control of and that they find valuable. They'd like to see improvement in that. There are times when they look at the survey results and they go, yeah, you know, that's all really good, but really this is what we'd like to work on. The point is, let's find something that we can all agree on, that we think we can control and is going to make our lives better in each group. And we'll do that over the next couple of months and then work on those things for several months after now. See if we're likely to get.
In having teams meet together, I mean, it's been like kind of connected to those teams' strategic plans and the way that they work.
It all beats into the overall goals.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you.
Yeah, you can't imagine how much I was crossing my fingers. One more survey and I'm still here.
All right, and now we have a Hive and Artist in Residence overview.
Has everyone been in this building before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's my first time.
It's your first time here? Well, welcome. I'm really glad to have you here.
Thank you.
I'm Eva Silverstone. I'm the Arts Education Specialist for Spokane Public Library. And I've been with the library for a long time, 21 years. So I guess I've been satisfied with my job. But and my job does allow me to do the things I do best because I feel like I've landed in the perfect spot for me here at the Hive. I've been here since the building opened, but I put a lot of research into it before we opened. So you can go to the next slide if you want. So what is the Hive? We're a non-traditional library. You probably have heard this already, but there are three main components of the building. The public meeting room space, this room that you're in right now. We've had seven meetings in the building today. And so, and most of those were meetings that the person who checked out the room borrowed it with their library card, just like they would borrow a book from a different library. So instead of borrowing a book for free, you borrow this room for free. And that wall can open up and connect this room with the next one. And then there's another wall that opens up. And you can see that it's pretty soundproof. We can't hear what's going on in the room next door. And they did a really job also, we can't really hear the traffic that much. So it's a great space for having meetings. Second part of the building is the Artist in Residence Program, which I'll go into in detail. And then we have, we partner with Spokane Public Schools and the offices of Spokane Virtual Learning are right across the hall. There, the Department of Spokane Public Schools, where kids either go to school 100% online or they take a class or two through Spokane Virtual Learning. So for instance, my son is a senior at LC. He's taking PE online, which sounds like a dream come true to me as someone who hated PE. But he's on the tennis team, so he has to just report his physical activity each week and doesn't have to take up a class period for his PE credit. So it's just awesome. But the Artist in Residence Program is the dream come true and why I get to do the things I do best. I've always wanted to have an Artist in Residence Program at the library. Other libraries have Artist in Residence Programs, but they're not true Artist in Residence Programs. They kind of dabble at having the program. And so when Jason told me about this building and the opportunity, I said, well, I want us to do it right. And, and I had heard from other programs that they will take an unused space and then turn it into the Artist in Residence Program. And then they'll say to the artist, don't get anything on the carpet. Don't use any thing that smells bad, you know, like oil paint or spray paint or resin and things like that. And, and then also, we're going to have another program in this room later this afternoon. So please clean up everything before you go. And so that didn't work. Wanted to read a little tape. Chantel, who was one of our first of artists in residence, says, "Moments in life, pondering what I will create. I'm still so in awe that I get to do a residency in this beautiful space. For a few years, I've wanted to make my work bigger and get those ideas that have been in my brain onto something big and on display to create more opportunities for human engagement, thought, wonder, awe through art. Things that I dreamed of are starting to be reality and I'm so grateful for these new realities." And that totally sums up the feeling that artists have when they're here. So go ahead and go to the next slide. So we say yes at the Hive, not no. So no, like where other Artist in Residence Programs say no, don't get anything out of the carpet. Our studios have cement floors, they have a floor drain, they have separate HVAC system in each studio. So if an artist is using oil paint, it's not going to stink up the whole building. There's also a special air filtration system. So if there's some fiber dust or clay dust or something like that, you can turn on the air filtration system and it pulls those microparticles up into it. It's like a vacuum cleaner for the air and, and keeps the artist's lungs safe as well. And so we still recommend that you use masks if you're going to be doing something with a lot of dust. But, and then we got really nice shop sinks with a silk trap. And so And so there are studios that are built with the intention of being artist studios instead of repurposing another space. One of our studios has a spray booth. So, and then also the artist gets full access to their studio. Nobody else uses that space. It's not gonna have a kids program in it later or a board meeting or something like that. So they can leave all their stuff out on their tables. And, and I'm an artist and I often, some of my creativity happens like out of my peripheral vision. So I might be working on something here, but being able to see this other project sitting over here, I'm thinking about it. And so they have lots of space to have multiple projects going on at once. And so it's really exciting. So go ahead and we have, when we first started, we put out a call for artists and we had thirty-five applications for twenty twenty-one when we opened in August. We were able to accept five artists and one writer. Then in twenty twenty-two, it increased to thirty-eight applications. We accepted sixteen artists and one writer. And it increased to more because we only did August through the end of the year for the first year. And then twenty twenty-two, we have a whole year. In twenty twenty-three, when we put, we put out a call at the end of twenty twenty-two, we got seventy-three applications. So I had to say no to a lot of people, which is super hard. But we scheduled eleven artists for the rest of twenty twenty-three. And then there were so many good applications that I selected another fourteen people who would go partway through twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. And, and then we'll do another call for artists again. So the need for studio spaces in Spokane is huge. When the builders were working on the building, they're like, who's gonna use these spaces? This is so weird. And Spokane Public Schools, like, what are those extra spaces? Could we use one for storage? They are going to be used. And so a friend of mine has a studio outside her home. She doesn't have heat. She has spring-in space heaters. She has extension cords running all over the place for her studio. There's no special ventilation system. These are really nice art studios and they're big. Yeah. So the first year we had, these are our, our team from the first year. And I'll tell you, I'm just gonna flip through these quickly and then I'll share some stories because it's really about stories. So go ahead and go to the next one. These are half of our twenty twenty-two artists and the other half of our twenty twenty-two artists. And, and then I want to share some stories. And because just like a regular library, there are many stories here. It's the beginning of stories where they get written and built and dreamed of. So literally written, one of our first artists, Erin Prell-Tuligate. She was here for six months and she wrote the whole first draft of her novel. I think her third novel here. She said usually it takes her a year and a half to write a first draft of a novel because of all the interruptions. But she wrote the whole first draft during the time she was here. She also helped us learn how the alarm system worked because she liked to work until like three o'clock in the morning. And she discovered how the alarm system works. Yeah. This, this is a lovely story. This is Julie Smithana, who just finished her residency recently at the Hive. And she taught a class to students from Spokane Virtual Learning. They had a special program for students who have been suspended or expelled from class. This is a fifth grader who was suspended from his school for behavior issues. And instead of the kids going home and spending two months or whatever at home, being suspended and maybe not making any educational progress, they came and worked with Spokane Virtual Learning. Julie, in her application, said she never really felt like she fit in, in any way when she was growing up. And so when I told her about the kids, she's like, oh, I wanna work with those kids. And so she is a ceramicsist and she taught them clay techniques. And so this fifth grader made two beautiful bowls. One was a pinch pot and the other was a slap style. And just seeing him put his thumbs up and that pride, like I still get a little teary-eyed about it because these are kids who get shut down, shut down, shut down. And for them to do something successful and have an artist with them, like showing them along, is really, really positive. And so, and then Julie had a really amazing time here also. Halfway through her Artist in Residence program, she was in a bad skiing accident and had a head injury and, and was really depressed and actually had to relearn how to walk. And, and she came here after she was released from the hospital. And she came even just for like two hours a day. She said it was therapy for her. And then she was super down and this like saved her. And I think art does that for people to save. So go ahead and go next one. And I'll try not to take up too much of your time, but Sean Brickman was one of our first artists in residence here. I was so excited when Sean, when I saw his application. Sean makes salation sturgeon nose canoes. And maybe some of you have heard of him. He is a recovery artist, which means he recovers the arts from his ancestors and keeps them alive. So his design for this canoe is based on the canoes that his ancestors made. And then he's made some modifications. So this one that he built in the studio is covered with ballistic nylon, which makes it much, much lighter. And, and then he hand carves the paddles. There are no screws or nails. Everything is tied through the beads and they are gorgeous. During the six months that he was here, he was able to make four canoes, which is way more than he normally can make at a time. And, and then one time there was a KSPS meeting here and they were walking around looking at the studios and like, oh, this is gonna make a really good story. So they got in touch with me, I got them in touch with Sean and he was featured on KSPS Northwest profile. And, and then one of his canoes that he made at the Hive was featured in a movie shortly after that. And so I feel like the Hive is a launching ground for artists. So this is Mallory's and Lisa's sculpture that is in the lobby right now. On the left is a picture of Mallory's twin sister at one of the tile workshops. So on the other side of that sculpture, in the rainbow section, are clay tiles that are made by the general public. And there are hundreds of them. They did three workshops here. Oh, I forgot to mention this. So they've got a studio here, but the way that they pay the library back for their studio is they have to teach classes or do programming for us. We pay for the supplies for that, so there's no out-of-pocket cost for the artist. But they share their expertise and their knowledge and their teaching skills with the general public. So they had three workshops and I don't know, around a hundred and twenty people attended those three workshops. And they made tiles, they got to make two. One they kept and one went into the sculpture. And the sculpture will be installed on Monroe, hopefully in June. And so they needed a little extra time to complete it and they were gonna have to pay for storage for the sculpture. So I'm letting them finish it in the lobby. Thank you, Jason, for giving permission for that. But, you know, they're, they're making this out of the goodness of their hearts and out of their desire to beautify Spokane. So it's, it's pretty cool. They also did tile workshops with Transitions for Women, the Art of Spokane with Disabled Adults and a whole bunch of high school students. And so trying to reach audiences that don't normally get to participate in things. Yeah. See, this is, this is Grace Flott. Grace grew up in Spokane. She only did a one-month residency in June of twenty twenty-two. She lives in Seattle now, but she spent a month living with her parents and doing a residency here and she was here a lot. She is a burn survivor during her scene, during her time in college. She did a semester abroad in Paris. And unfortunately, the building she lived in was targeted by a, an arsonist. And the old buildings, the building just like was terrible. And she had to jump out of the third floor window. Her roommate did not survive. And she has burn scars on sixty percent of her body. And she paints portraits of other burn survivors. And then while she was here, we connected her with the Spokane Publishing Center. She learned a whole bunch of print techniques. She made prints of her skin, which is what she's holding up there. And then she, after she left here, she applied for a fifteen, a grant through the Seattle Office of Arts and Culture Home Corps. And she was awarded a fifteen thousand dollar grant to continue her work painting burn survivors and working with them to see the beauty in their bodies instead of the scarring. And, and she told me that she felt like having the residency here legitimized her. And she wouldn't have gotten that grant if it wasn't for her time here. And so that made me proud too. So there's one more artist. And Gwen Pavanka dove in one hundred percent. She was here all the time. This is, I brought some of her, see, she carves her pieces. So she puts layers and then she carves in. She created over a hundred and twenty-five paintings while she was here. And she also had a six-month residency. We allow artists to choose anywhere between one and six months. And she hosted her very first art market, the thirty-three artists art market. Almost six hundred people attended that event. It was intense, but it was really successful. And so, let's see.
The next one after that was like two thousand people.
Yeah. She had one recently at the Warner Building and yeah, it was huge. Yeah. But the one that was held here, because it's the library space, we had, they had to have something educational at their station. And then there was no fee charged to the artist. So this place is all about making opportunities. And I feel like we've really done a good job making opportunities. So I forgot what's after that. Okay, that's who we have right now. Spectrum Center is here right now. Amalia Fish, Lena Lopez Schindler and Elise Hockstadt. And then we'll see programs coming up from those artists on our calendar. We've already got some of them on the calendar. What's next? In September, we're starting a really cool project with EWU, where we went into a partnership with them. Go to MOU. I've never written an MOU before. To never write an MOU yet. But we're going to, we had students of five. And we're accepting two graduating BFA students to have a six-month residency. So I was an art student a long time ago. And then when I got out of college, art school, I got a bartending job. And, and then I got a retail job and then eventually I made my way to library land. But you tend to lose contact with your art when you enter the work world. And so this program is set up to allow graduating art students to carry their art practice into their postgraduate life. And they will have a faculty mentor from EWU who will meet with them once a month. And they'll have the same requirements as other artists in residence here. But, and then they'll, because they're younger, also that lovely mentorship that happens with other artists in the building will happen. So that's, that's coming up. Programs are coming up. I think I've covered a lot. Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
How you, you get all these applications?
Yeah.
How do you decide who's going to be selected?
Oh, I just pull aside numbers and I pull them out. No. No, it's, it's pretty involved. So there are six, it's a really long application and there's six different parts of the application that I grade each part. And so, and Jason helps me with this. And I'm also gonna be pulling in a former Artist in Residence for the next batch. So there, and so there's a rubric. So their vision of what they wanna do with the, the studio. Their story, which I don't like ask outright, are you from a diverse population? I say, we value diversity and please tell us your story. Yeah. And it can be, there's a wide variety of stories. Their teaching experience or their ideas for programs that they would like to do. Their art practice. I ask them to tell me about their art practice. And then their artwork themselves. And then there's one other thing. I can't remember what the last thing is. But there's five or six different things that, and then I score those things. And then look at all the scores and then also look at the stories. Look at who would work well together, what they're asking. Some of the applications are, I need a place to run my business. And I'm like, hmm, that's not really what this is for. And this last time, I had a lot more musicians and like businesses that needed like an incubator space. And it's something I've talked about with Jason, that we kind of need more things like this. And not just for artists, but like it would be so cool to have a building where there were artist spaces and musician spaces and business incubator spaces. So Spectrum, who is in Studio A right now, they're a nonprofit. They are doing art, but they're also like a nonprofit incubator. And so the space is allowing them to do their work without having to do it out of Anne's living room, which is where they have been doing it. And so, and also that synergy between the different mediums, like when you have art and music and writers and all in the same space and then also business people who are using these meeting rooms is really powerful. So, but it's super hard choosing.
I would imagine.
Yeah.
Where on Monroe is that sculpture gonna help?
Emerson Garfield Neighborhood Factory. So it'd be like before you go up the hill.
Why?
Yes. So there was a neighborhood gateway sign that fell through. And so Mallory and Lisa presented to both the Emerson Garfield and the North Hill Neighborhoods to see if they would like a neighborhood gateway sign that they designed. And they worked with them to come up with a design that would be amenable to everyone involved. And then they got Saga funding for the supplies to build the sculpture. Then they got the Hive, so they had space to build the sculpture. They are actually still raising money to pay for the installation and also to pay themselves because they are not getting paid for the sculpture. Yeah. So I personally think artists should get paid. But, and it's something that we don't do here. Like when I researched other Artist in Residence programs around the country, a lot of them pay their artists through foundation and friends money. So we don't pay our artists. We provide amazing space and we don't have them have any out-of-pocket costs.
And we do their marketing for them.
We do their marketing for, yeah. We do their marketing for, yeah. So we, we end up giving a lot in kind to our artists. Yeah, so, yeah. And then every Wednesday from four to seven, it's open studio time. And and that's the time when the studios are all open and people can just wander into the building and visit the studios. Artists are required to be here at least twenty hours a week and then do their programming in addition to that. So they give back a lot to the library.
This open studio time is in addition to the workshops and the planned program.
And I won't be here at the next one because my mom has a birthday next week. I'm gonna go this far. Yeah, so. From the Lisa, I'll be here. Wonderful. So our youth art special, let's go some for the next Wednesday. But it's, it's really fun because, and I'm taking a lot of time, I'm sorry. But most of the time, we see art in its finished state, in museums and galleries. And this is very quiet. It's sort of tinto around. This is a place where you get to see work in progress. And then if you come the next week, you can see how it changed and and then changed again. And you could even give feedback. I'm like, oh, I like that part, but I don't really like that part. And then you can come back and see if they took your advice. It's, it's very cool and I feel really fortunate to be here. And I also am so proud of Spokane Public Library for doing a program like this. When I researched around the country, there was one other library in the country that had a dedicated Artist in Residence space. All the other libraries I talked to use another room in a library. And it's nothing like this. This is very innovative and amazing. So it's super cool. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Two comments. One, like echoing that of the like diverse needs of Spokane. One recurring one is that the need for space, like performance space and creative space. And so it's, I also am grateful that the library is able to provide that, so that need. And also to you and your work. I don't know if you know it, but your name is very synonymous with the Hive. And people who like just assume that I know you're, they're talking about the Hive and they're like, well, you know, we'll be there. Or like, and so your, your presence here is so much connected to all of this happening.
Well, I really hear about the artists. So thank you.
I do appreciate it. Yeah, I think that comes through to everyone who comes to this space. So I think we know that.
Projects that we did. I drew a picture of my son. These are like silk screen transfer on clay tiles. This is Hupo paper, which is made out of recycled plastic bottles. We did a workshop on that. And this is one of Gwen's projects, the little pieces from that. Some examples of the projects that happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moves that are down on the list and have the empty spaces. You feel that they will come.
We do. We believe we can execute that. We've got some grant opportunities that we'll be working at for them.
It's all pay-per-oss. Love it.
All right, so is there any additional items to add to the agenda coming to the end here? All right, and public comment? All right, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, June twentieth, at the Central Library. And we aren't having a session, so unless anybody else has more business for the good of the order, I will call the meeting adjourned. Yes, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, Penny.
If anyone wants an informal tour, I can, I'm happy to do that. Or we can do it another time.
Thank you.